Good evening. In the Book of Romans, it reads, "Having gifts that differ according to the grace given to us, let us use them, if in prophecy and proportion to our faith, if service and our serving, the one who teaches in his teaching, the one who exhorts in his exhortation, the one who contributes in generosity, the one who leads with zeal, the one who does acts of mercy with cheerfulness." Let us all make use of these gifts on the board and in the community to complement one another. Let us endeavor to see beneath the surface and always look for true meaning. Let us always strive to be humble in victory and graceful in defeat, to be willing to admit our errors and build on our success, and to keep our minds open even when the facts aren't what we want to hear as we endeavor to provide our community and its children with wonderful educational opportunities.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless America.
Thank you, Mr. Rutledge. Fire evacuation notice. We have two exits, one in the rear of the chambers, out to the park, out to the town green, or to my left, your right, left down the stairs and out to the rear parking lot. Could we have roll call, please?
Mr. Rutledge?
Here.
Mrs. Riley?
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mrs. Hernandez?
Here.
Mr. Neville?
Here.
Mr. Ryder?
Here.
Mr. Renier?
Here.
Mrs. Depau?
Here.
Chairman Crizell?
Here. Number six, board guest, Mr. Dreszek, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me start with a disclaimer for this evening, not just for the board members, but for those members of the community who will watch the meetings at home. We've tried to make it a practice that at every board meeting, we put people in front of you that people actually want to see and hear from, which are kids. Unfortunately, there are times where we have adults come and speak with you. So what we try to do is consolidate them all into one evening, and this is the only shot we're going to get. So we do have three guests this evening. We're going to try to make it as quick as possible. But our first guest, I'd like to invite Mr. Diggs, who's our esteem coordinator. He's been affectionately referred to as the district's old MacGyver. Mr. Diggs is going to speak with us about our college career pathways presentation and opportunities that we have for kids to get college credits along with our partnership at AsNUTUk. Mr. Diggs?
All right. Thank you very much for having me here tonight. I'm here to talk about some of the credit opportunities available to students through our partnership with AsNUTUk Community College. We have 36 courses in Enfield where students can earn college credit, but I'm here tonight to highlight some of the ones that don't get as much attention. We often hear about a lot of the AP courses and other ones, so I'm going to try and focus on some of the opportunities available through our community partner. One of our first course programs that we have, and you can see on the screen, is we have a new certificate program that'll be coming in this year. We have a college career pathways program with AsNUTUk, which consists of four courses. We have a college connections program with three courses, and a high school partnership. So I'll take you through each of these programs as we go through today. The first program is going to be new this year, and it's an EMT certificate program. So this program is available to students in grades 11 and 12. It's going to be taught on the AsNUTUk Community College campus for two credits. Students participating in this program will be able to receive a state EMC certificate and a national EMT certificate. That EMT certificate ends up being kind of a gateway credential for students who end up being interested in pursuing other careers in the medical field as well. So a lot of students may start with something like this and then use that to get into nursing or medical assisting or other areas. It's a good opportunity for them to decide whether a medical career is good for them. The course also, in addition to being a certificate program, students have the option to earn credit through Charter Oak State College, so they can take the coursework that they do at AsNUTUk, and they can apply to get the college credit, so three credits for that through Charter Oak. We'll be using the same transportation that we're currently using for our college connections program as well. The EMT, in order to receive the certificate, they're going to have to do 160 classroom hours and 10 hours of practicum. So that's going to be onsite at Johnson Memorial Hospital. It's usually scheduled in two intervals of five hours, so they're going to go in and they're going to get some experience working with staff at the hospital. There's also going to be a section of online instruction that they'll be completing either on their own or back at school. And then there's options for clinical hours and ambulance ride-alongs for students, so they can get experience and see what it would be like to actually fill the role of an EMT. There's been very large interest in this program, and currently 44 students have shown interest in participating in the program for next year. The second program we have is a college career pathways, and that's open to students in grades 10 through 12. And through this program, students can earn up to 13 credits to AsNUTUk Community College, and that's for doing coursework at Enfield High School. So students can apply for the program, they can get credit for algebra, chemistry, marketing, parent-child development. And the process really consists of the students applying for these credits, taking the courses and passing the Accuplacer math or getting SAT/ACT math scores that would allow them to earn the credits there. The next program, not to be confused with college career pathways, is our college connections. This is integrated with the fifth-year program with AsNUTUk. Currently, we have instructors coming in, starting in 7th and 8th grade from AsNUTUk, to begin working with our students, teaching them advanced manufacturing skills. They're teaching the students CAD, they're teaching the students design skills, and they're working along with our instructors in their classroom. The goal of this program is to make sure that students are prepared for a lot of the modern manufacturing careers that are available to students. As students work with us at the high school, they're taking high school coursework in 9th and 10th grade that prepares them to participate in programs at AsNUTUk for their junior and senior year. So for that, students are released from Enfield High currently after lunch, and they go over and they're working in either the welding technology, machine technology, or electromechanical, we'll be adding next year, to begin a certificate or associate's degree at AsNUTUk while they're in high school. So they're earning their high school credit, so it's elective credit, but then they're also beginning their coursework there. So students are able to take and earn six to 12 transcribed credits a year while they're working on at their program. And for this, we are providing transportation. That's the same one we're looking to use when we bring over the students for EMT. The enrollment for this program has increased. When we, in 2015-16, we only had two students who took advantage of the program. In 2016-17, with bringing on the career counselors, there was more guidance in getting into the program, and we began getting more students coming in. So for 2016-17, we had 12, and this year, we began with 16 students. So we had seven in machine technology, two of those graduated already, but two withdrew. But we had another student who took the place of that, starting in January. And he was actually excited after going on a program tour over there and was looking to see if he could start midway through as opposed to waiting. And then we also have nine students who started this year in welding technology. So with the college connections program, there's available to second-year students, there's scholarship opportunities that they can earn, they can apply for if they continue on to AsNUTUk. And AsNUTUk has done a good job, and we're reaching out to community partners and sponsors over on the right. When they reach, this allows students to go in and potentially have their second semester of their second year of the program paid for by a community partner. They can start interning, they can get tuition reimbursement, and a few of the partners have even offered a cost-of-living incentive, so that as students are studying, they are earning income, which a lot of these sponsors have found is one of the major determinants for students dropping out of the program, is often they find that if they do not, if they can't balance the work-school load, that sometimes students end up leaving the program. So by offering some of these additional sponsorships or scholarships to the students, they find that there are more students able to get through and complete the program. So a lot of these scholarships are determined by AsNUTUk, but the partners offer them out to students participating in the advanced manufacturing programs there. And the last program that we have is our high school partnership, and this is available to all students, earning a grade point average of 3.0 or higher, and it offers a free course at AsNUTUk each semester for students who are willing to travel over there after school to take advantage of the program. The great thing about all of these programs is that they're not exclusive, so a student could be earning CCP credits while in college connection and be taking advantage of high school partnership. So by the programs not being exclusive, students can be earning multiple credits through multiple programs a year and be meeting many of their general elective requirements through CCP while participating in college connections. So if students take advantage of all of the program options, they can work to complete their first year of coursework at AsNUTUk towards an associate or one of the certificate programs while still in high school.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Rutledge?
Good evening. You know, wow, I kind of wish I could just go in a time machine and go back 25 years of high school over again. These types of things were never available to us when I was in high school, and it just goes to show what kind of opportunities are available to our students here. But I did have a couple of questions regarding the college connections and the high school partnership. Out of curiosity, how many slots are available in each of those programs?
So for the high school partnership, there's no slots available for that. For our college connections, we, it depends. We currently have 12 to 13 students signed up for next year. I think we can take probably up to about 30 students over there.
Okay. And how is that, you know, so let's just assume for a second, the number is 30. How are we marketing it to students to try and get more kids to take advantage of that opportunity?
Actually, we market it in a few different ways. Often, the students are told about the program through program instructors, so the teachers in the classroom are often their first line, working with the students. Also, the career counselors who work at the high school are in classrooms frequently, and the career counselors are letting students know about the programs. And then things like our program of studies night at Enfield High School, we're starting to promote the programs earlier and earlier so that students know about these programs, even as young as 8th grade, but we're also mentioning it to the students as the upcoming freshmen, so they're aware these programs are available and they can start planning for it as early as when they're transitioning from middle school to high school.
Great. And one last question. Now, I think you mentioned something about internship opportunities through some of these programs. Can you go a little bit more into that, like, for example, with the manufacturing, you know, program? You listed a number of sponsors.
Right.
Are there, like, summer internship opportunities for students to go into the, you know, workplace and get some real-world experience that way, or how does that work?
So the internship opportunity, when we're talking about at AsNUTUk, typically the students are doing coursework for their first year. And if they're taking full advantage of our college connections program, they're getting much of that first-year coursework done. And then the internship opportunities is usually taking place their second year, so it would be their first year out of high school that they're taking advantage of the internship. And it could be second semester, first year out, but that's usually when that takes place. But there are other opportunities available for students who are interested in internship options. It's somewhat limited in welding and machining due to age, but the career counselors often are working with students to get them experience in manufacturing or shadowing opportunities so they can see what's available to it while they're still in high school.
Great. Well, hey, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Riley?
You just blew me away. You totally hit a home run. This is incredible opportunities for our students, some of the ones that don't end up going on to, you know, the traditional four-year university, four-year universities. This gives kids an opportunity to lessen the financial burden on themselves and their parents, so this is great. I wish that I could go back to high school and do this. This is awesome. Do you know how many, well, not how many, but maybe the percentage of the kids, the students that are taking advantage of the AP classes and all these extra pathways and connections, do you know, like, a general percentage in the high school that take part?
I think it's actually, if you look at a school of, like, size of Enfield High, it's only about 1% of students that are taking advantage of college connections, so it's 12 to 16 students a year out of a school of 15, 50 to 600. It's a little bit higher for CCP. CCP, there's 57 students who are taking advantage of that. EMT, we're going to have, we have 44 students who have expressed interest in taking it. Our course is limited to about 30 students there, so it would be about 2% taking advantage of that. So the percentage is, is low, just because of the numbers of slots available for it, but...
But the AP classes too, though?
I don't have the numbers for the AP in front of me. Sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
I can get that information to you if you'd like.
Cool. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Mr. Renier?
Thank you. I know over 20 years ago, they had a partnership with AsNUTUk, and it's great to see how much it's grown since then, especially with all the continued programs and academics. The high school partnership, I was fortunate enough, my junior year, to actually partake in it, and I can definitely say that the professors definitely don't take it easy on you, knowing that you're a high school student. I remember the first paper I got back was a real eye-opener, but it was, it was like, oh, okay. But it's a good opportunity for individuals to actually go to college and see if it's actually a right fit for them before parents have to spend, or students that spend oogles amount of money, to go to their first class and go, eh, it's not for me. So it's a great opportunity for our students to see if it's a great fit for them, and it's great to see that this program just keeps getting bigger and bigger and helping everyone in the community, so thank you.
Exposure is a big part of this. The programs a student starts as a junior year might not be what they make their career in, but they'll know that what they've experienced, whether it's a fit for them or not.
Mr. Neville?
Did a great job. I knew you would, much better than I could do here. I think Sarah and Ashley and myself knew that this was something that would kind of blow your socks off when you come up and hear this. I think because, and one of the things we've told you guys is that we want to get as much of this information out to the community as we possibly can, because it's just not there, and we have a wide audience on ETV that watches this, and I think it's important to get out the good things that we do. The comments that were made about the, you know, how many kids have been taking this and it's a great opportunity, a few years ago, we didn't have anywhere near this enrollment, and I think John has done an awful lot with his people to really push this and get it out there. I mean, going from 4 to 12 to 16, that's astronomical, okay, in three years. And I think it's the opportunities that we're providing kids, all kinds of kids, not just kids who'll go to four-year colleges, but all kinds of folks, and they're walking out of there with a job, more likely than not. Could you just comment on the, kind of, the opportunities that kids have when they get out of, like, the welding and stuff, and what kind of money they can make doing this?
Sure. It depends on the area the students want to go in. One of the largest areas of growth right now is in the machining and manufacturing technology. Some of the projections are 18,000-plus jobs in the region in the next few years, and the opportunities really haven't been, have never been better. There's, I hear stories that when I'm over at AsNUTUk of students getting picked up right after finishing the associate's program and starting in the $60-plus-thousand range. Now, that might be typical, that someone getting a job in Pratt, but the opportunities are there. And often, the employers are offering incentives for their students for continuing education and other pieces that make it beneficial. So beyond the starting salary, there's a lot of benefits that can go along with it. One of the, one of the partners, EDAC, actually came in and gave a presentation to the students talking about, you know, some of the opportunities that are available to students out there, and the starting salaries are quite good. It could be anywhere from $36,000 to $75,000, depending upon the skill and the area that the student is looking to go into.
And one other thing, too, I think some of the things you were talking about, two of them aren't even going to start until next year, right? The EMT and...
EMT and the electromechanical, and that one is something that industry is asking for as well. That's the programming for, that is servicing, maintaining, and building the systems for robotics and automation within manufacturers. So that is an existing program at AsNUTUk, but it hadn't been an area that we've been sending students over for college connections, so we're looking to grow that for next year.
Yeah. Just as a comment, do you have any idea in terms of how we compare with other districts in terms, I know AsNUTUk is leading in the community colleges around the state, how do we compare to other districts in terms of taking advantage of those opportunities?
I think we have, so there's other districts who participate in the college connections program, so that'd be Windsor Locks, East Granby, Granby, Bloomfield, Hartford, Southfield. So those districts are taking advantage of that. Where we have an advantage of AsNUTUk being in town is for the accessibility of students taking advantage of the high school partnership. CCP is something that's done widely across the state, but again, it's easier when we have the ability to have AsNUTUk come in and help issue Accuplacer tests onsite or things like that. So we are, we're probably unique in that we have several programs with AsNUTUk, four or five, but there are many districts around that have one or more of the programs with a participating community college. We do have the advantage of having an advanced manufacturing center in town, so...
Are we still getting some access from the AsNUTUk staff at the middle school level?
We are, yes.
Okay.
So they're still continuing to work. They've really committed to that fifth-year model, where they're having the instructors come in and make that connection with the students, starting as, you know, young as 7th and 8th grade. And they offer support to our teachers in how to instruct students in CAD design, 3D printing, which is going to be a huge area of growth for additive manufacturing in the future.
Fantastic. Keep up the good work, John. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Before, the next person, it's been requested that we try to get a copy of that PowerPoint presentation.
Absolutely. Would you like it emailed to all members?
Sure. And Ms. Riley has another question.
Yep, I just had one other question. I don't know if it is possible or isn't possible, but just a thought. Is it possible to keep track going forward, once we get more graduates, to keep track of how many students who take these programs end up employed as a direct result of the partnerships? Is that something that we could track, going, you know, maybe four years down the line, we could have enough information to do that?
That is something I can look into, how we would track them.
Like an exit, yeah, like an exit survey or something?
Exit survey?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll work on that.
Okay.
One of the things is, sometimes, there's a little bit of a delay. Sometimes the students may take a year before going back in, and I know that I've seen several students who participated, may have tried another thing, and then connect later, so it'll take a look at longitudinally how many students are participating.
Cool. Thank you.
Anyone else? Great job, thank you. I just wanted one question, just to put you on the spot. How are we coming on our eagle logo for the sign?
We actually have a prototype of the eagle logo. The class has done it. We're trying to make sure that it will stand up to the elements.
Okay.
So we're going to work on trying to make it fit, a design that will please the Historical Commission by using materials that would be appropriate for the area. If we like, I can also update you on that. I could send photos on the progress.
Historical Society may want it out of asbestos or something, for all we know, so...
Hopefully, hopefully, they'll accept white oak.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, and keep up the great job. Mr. Dreszek?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, John, and as John's wrapping up, John's a bit modest, but I think I want to just highlight something that Mr. Neville brought to the attention of the board. There's, it isn't a coincidence that the correlation of the number of kids that we have participating in these programs and the arrival of John in the position that he's in, it isn't happenstance. John is, we don't have, we couldn't ask for a better ambassador for these programs and for our kids. And I was going to warn you in advance, some of the questions that you're going to ask for, knowing John how I do, not only will I have answers, but he'll come up with other things that he's going to want to share with you about this, including probably driving to these kids' house and finding out what they liked about it. So moving on, for the last few, five years or so, and you've heard myself and Dr. Schuman talk a lot about this, particularly during budget presentations, and I made a reference to this during my budget presentation, when it comes to the district's goals. You, as a board of ed, you have your own goals, but as I mentioned to all of you, the district also has a set of goals that we not only institute on a yearly basis, but then we have measurable tools throughout the year, and this has been an ongoing process for about five years. One of the things that's different this year is typically, our administrative council gets together over the summertime to start planning out the goals for the following year, using data from the previous year and whether or not we need to continue on a particular mission, or we need to go make adjustments or make changes. We actually started with five in the first year. We pared it down to four. And one of the charges that we've given to the administrative council, not just with Andy and I, but really collectively as a group, was finding out the priorities that we needed to achieve from the district leadership standpoint and trying to involve as many stakeholders in the process as we could. One of the things I recognized last year is typically, the way the process concludes annually is, we all get together at the end of the year, we review not just what the goals and the progress that was made toward achieving the goals, and then we start planning out the following year's goals. And we looked around last year at the, our end-of-the-year meeting and realized that there's a lot of great work that's being done by our administrative staff here in town that only those of us in the room really know what it is. We don't advertise it all that much, but there's a lot of subsets that come from the work of these goals. I just mentioned briefly a few of them that you guys are aware. We talk about initiatives like Wednesday Night School, a lot of the things, the partnerships that we do with community-based businesses in town. A lot of that is actually a direct result from our administrative staff tying into what we're doing as a goal. So what I asked these guys to do this year was, instead of sitting around a table or in a room at the end of the year, and all of us just talking about it, saying what great work we did, I thought it was important for you, as a board, to hear the work that we're doing, and also with using the access of having this be on live television, so the community can really get a sense of the work the administrators are doing. I need to add, and I can't stress this enough, what you're about to hear is not in anyone's job description. This isn't what they signed up for when they came to work for the Enfield Public Schools. This was something that happened a bit organically, but it's really taken on a life of its own. This isn't me. This isn't Andy. This is really the administrators who take the lead on whatever sort of passion project that we're working for, making sure that we're advancing the district, and then they take it and run. And they, we give each other updates collectively throughout the year. We're a little early, but looking at the calendar and trying to make sure, there's right now, we have four goal teams. So you're going to see just a snapshot, and I've asked them to be brief, a lot briefer than I'm being now, but I don't often get a chance to brag about this group to you guys, or at least on live television, but I asked them to give just a brief synopsis of some of the two, some of the team, the work that the teams are doing. So you're going to hear from two tonight. We're going to start with Goal Team One, which is actually led by, I'm going to put Julie on the spot because she raised her hand first, so it's not led by Julie. Julie drew the short straw. And you're going to invite some members of the goal team up here to explain what Goal Team One was and some of the work that's being accomplished toward that. So Julie, you're up.
So, good evening. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. I'm joined by other representatives of Goal Team One. So as Chris said, in an effort to best serve the children and the families and the members of the Enfield community, our district has developed four goals. And tonight, we'd like to share with you the work that we're doing for Goal Number One. Goal Number One, to provide opportunities for success of all students and further enhance the learning environment of the Enfield Public Schools. As you can see, our goal team is comprised of administrators who represent all grade levels and who have expertise in a wide range of areas. And we believe that the work that we're doing for Goal One directly supports the district's vision of making a difference in Enfield for every child, every day. On our next slide, we've stated our theory of action, which supports our goal, and I'm going to go back. So our theory of action is, if we develop, implement, and monitor interventions that address the most significant challenges that impact students, then all students will have the opportunity to be successful.
Hi, everyone. My name is Laura Gagden, and I'm one of the assistant principals at Enfield High School. So one of the challenges that we identified was attendance. And so in years past, eSchool was our grading and attendance program that we utilized district-wide. This year, eSchool was replaced by Power School. So our main focus was to learn how to utilize Power School reports efficiently to understand the needs of our students and to inform interventions moving forward. Our main focus, that was our main focus. We provided professional development to our teachers and staff on a number of occasions so that they would first learn how to use Power School, but also how to accurately record and submit attendance. We opened up a Power School portal for our students and our parents at both JFK and EHS, which allows them to get up-to-the-minute access for attendance and also grading information. With that, we provided parents and students with training sessions during the day, in the afternoon, and in the evening, so that they would understand how to use all the functions that come with that Power School parent-student portal. We also looked at different reports that Power School can provide to us and the information we can get from them, one of them being attendance tracking and notification, which allows us to track daily student attendance and provides us with updates and lets us know when students have reached certain attendance triggers, such as, for instance, five days, five absences, 10 absences, and so on. And this allows us to send correspondence home to parents and guardians to let them know this as well. This information is important... This information is important for our attendance teams, which already meet monthly in all of our schools, so that we can really look at this information and analyze student attendance moving forward. So at this point, we're still exploring all that Power School has to offer to us, and so we're going to continue to have this be part of our goal for next year as well.
Hi, everybody. I'm Lori Siegel. I'm one of the special ed coordinators. I do preschool through K through grade two, and I supervise the speech pathologists. So another area that we've identified as having a need is the social-emotional behavioral supports at the preschool level. We implemented a program called Second Step Early Learning Program at STEAM Preschool, Head Start, and the Integrated Special Ed Preschool Classes. The premise of the Second Step program is that academic achievement increases when the kids have direct instruction on how to learn, how to get along with each other, and how to recognize and deal with emotions. There are five curriculum areas in the program: skills for learning, empathy, emotion management, friendship problem-solving, and transition to kindergarten. The teachers have six weeks of daily lessons that include things such as whole-body listening, recognizing feelings, turn-taking, and the lessons are accompanied by puppets, songs, stories, and games. Additionally, the parents receive weekly HomeLink newsletters that describe activities that they can do at home to further reinforce the social-emotional skill development. There's an online component for the teachers and parents to sign into as well.
Good evening. Katie Reeves, the principal at Enfield Street School. I'm sure you remember, a couple months ago, I was here talking about PBIS. It's coming back. So the way that we're addressing that social-emotional and behavioral component at the elementary schools is through PBIS. You heard me speak specifically about Enfield Street School and how we were in year one and really focusing on tier one of PBIS. So five of the elementary schools are in the same position that we are. We are focusing on that tier one. So we are putting those school and classroom systems in place. We're developing our core values, what we believe in, what we stand for. We're creating lesson plans so that we can actually go through and do the preventative piece, so teaching our expected behaviors so that we can ultimately, the goal is to be proactive, spend more time on instruction and less time on problem behaviors. And then what it looks like after?
Hi, I'm Jen Miller, principal at Prudence Crandall. So we started PBIS two years ago. We are in year three. And we were really able to pilot PBIS at the elementary level. So we have that tier one in place. We're in year three, and we're continuing to make sure that that's really shored up and strong, because before we move any students into more intensive services, we want to make sure that that strong foundation is there. So we're continuing to work on our tier one. This year, we added conflict resolution lessons. This is a series of nine lessons that all of our students in third, fourth, and fifth grade will get, and it really helps them work through issues that they might have with their peers or with their learning, and gives them way to be respectful with each other, be peaceful problem solvers. So that's what we're working on in tier one, but we're also moving on to the other tiers. And a lot of that is work on building systems. So we're working on setting exit and entry criteria so that we know how do we find the students that need additional, more targeted and focused interventions? And then how do we learn what those interventions are and match them to the needs of students? So we want to make sure that we have the right interventions to meet the kinds of needs that we're seeing. So a lot of it is building some systems to identify students, setting entry and exit criteria, and then implementing interventions. And I'm happy to say that it's going very well. Our students that are receiving tier-two interventions are showing great progress, and hopefully they'll be able to be exited. And so that's kind of what it looks like in the future, is since we've got that solid foundation, we're adding more interventions throughout that multi-tiered system. Thank you.
Conal Clark, one of the other Assistant Principals at Enfield High School. At the secondary level, we're also looking at behaviors and academics. And September, we came here and we discussed Wednesday Night School as one of the ways we are addressing both behaviors and academics. Just as an overview, Wednesday Night School is an opportunity for students to use, Wednesday Night School as an intervention. Also, students that may have received a day of in-school suspension, they can forego that with the understanding that they will attend Wednesday Night School. Wednesday Night School is approximately a three-hour program where they get two hours of academic support, one with one of their teachers, another hour with a certified math teacher. Within that one hour with the certified math teacher, we have therapists come over from Enfield Youth Services and speak with the students one-on-one about making good choices, and if they are there for a behavioral reason, to reflect on the behaviors in hopes that it does not happen again. Following that, the administration staff comes and grabs the students, and we go down to the weight room, the cardio room, or in some cases, the gym, to work out with the students, and more importantly, build relationships with these students. Another initiative that we are actually piloting at Enfield High School this year that we're very proud of is an academic progress program. It's very similar to what the sport programs are doing at Enfield High, but this one takes a look at all students that were found ineligible after a report card. Every single student, whether you're an athlete, non-athlete, special ed, non-special ed, will have a member of our student intervention team, which is made up of over 30 teachers, assigned to a student, so that they can check in with that student on a weekly or bi-weekly basis. These students are required to utilize Eagle Block sessions. This is a pilot, something that we know needs some revision, some work. But in the early onset, from marking period one to marking period two, we saw 25% of our students on the ineligibility list come off. From marking period two to three, which we just finished, we saw 37% come off. So we're making progress, but we also know that we have work to do. This is a model that we hope to bring to the middle school next year. And now Marilyn Crisati will speak a little bit about Thursday Night School.
Hi. I know that you all heard from Dave Yakabuchi in the fall about Thursday Night School, and we have implemented this throughout the last 20 weeks of the school year. To date, we have 83 students who have participated in Thursday Night School. 51 of them were as an alternate route to not having in-school suspension, and 21 were for academics. And there was a combination of the two. Some of them were for intervention with academics because we follow the same protocol as the high school does. We have, JRB has started using this as a tool for the students who have had to report to JRB. They have requested that students attend our program on Thursday nights, especially the piece that works with the Youth Services as you service as part of our Juvenile Review Board. We have had some parent requests, not many, for students to stay, and we've just had kids who have volunteered to stay. That seems to be their peer group sometimes after school for kids who do not have a peer group of their own. We have some, let's see, blocks, roadblocks to our program that the high school does not have. Number one, our students don't drive. So we are contingent about having parents, you know, if parents can't come and pick their student up, they can't participate in Thursday Night School, because we also don't have the magic carpet that comes in that direction either, although I have made some calls, as you know, to try to get that out there. Another block that we have is we don't always have access to gym facilities, especially in the winter. Basketball team, the cheerleading team, they take over the gym, so we revert to sometimes yoga, running stairs, doing different things that we can do without the gym. And we have four administrators that cover that last hour as well that we share with. And that's our Thursday Night School, and we hope to look at the new initiative for next year with Enfield High. Thank you.
Thank you all. Any questions? Ms. LeBlanc.
Ms. Gagnon, I'd just like to tell you that Power School works beautifully for the kids that are late, especially kids that are driving. For the parents, especially for that first-period class, when Duncan's at the top of your street.
So it's provide up-to-the-minute.
Are you saying somebody's busted?
I just like to tell you, it's definitely an effective tool. It's, the teachers are very good with updating it, so it's like real-time, and there's no wiggle room on that. So it's definitely, that is hugely effective. And I just wanted to say to Mr. Clark, I'm glad to hear about, you know, Wednesday Night School, because I was intrigued with that in the fall, and I think we had hoped you'd come back over the summer. I think we were asking for another update, once you got a full year in, so. And I understand that there's roadblocks at JFK, and hopefully someday, we can get that referendum passed, and there's not as many roadblocks with that, so. And then again, the PBIS, I really enjoyed learning about that when you guys were here a couple months ago. But thank you, and I think what you guys are doing is effective, and I like the goals. So, thank you.
Mr. Neville?
Thank you. It's always nice to see you folks taking advantage of the technology and using the data. It excites me, because we never had that kind of data, and it's, you made such great use of it, and you're turning things around. In-school never really appealed to me for kids, is it didn't seem to fix the problem and sometimes created other problems. And you guys are giving them an alternative to it. You're also now setting up some relationships with staff and stuff like that. I think that's fabulous. So, keep it up, guys. I know it's not a little bit extra in your paychecks, but we certainly appreciate it, and we want you to know that very, very much for what you're doing for us. Thank you.
Ms. Riley?
I just wanted to say thank you to all of you. Your dedication and initiative to do all this extra stuff for our school system, the district, is to be commended highly. You guys do a great job, and I just really wanted to say thank you so much for your hard work.
On behalf of the board, that's what we're here for. We're here for the kids, and you guys are there for the kids, so we thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thank you.
That's, that's a glitch in the system, so it's nothing, nothing. So if we could get copies, we could get that emailed to us.
We'll email everything out to you for all the presentations you see.
ETV mentioned that there's a different, not, what's the, not a font, it's different. Yeah, it's definitely not you. So next group?
Okay, moving on. We're going to move on to Goal Team Three, which, where's Michelle? Okay. She's trying to hide, but I knew she was going to try to hide, that's why I called her out. Okay, you guys are up.
We're ready. Torque push button. It's on? Okay. Thank you for having us. We are representing Goal Team Three. I'm Jaclyn Valley. I'm the PK STEAM Academy Coordinator from Stowe Early Learning Center.
I'm Lisa Hunter, the principal of Hazerville Memorial School.
I'm Erin Clark, the principal of Enfield High School.
And Goal Team Three focuses on ensuring that the scope and sequence of the PK-12 curricula and related programming is both achievable and deliverable to all students in the Enfield Public Schools. In order to measure our goal and collect data to inform our work, we created a Learning Looks survey, which is a non-evaluative survey that administrators use during classroom visits to examine to what extent the instruction is aligned with our curriculum and best practices in promoting student engagement. And the first part, oh, I'm sorry, sorry. The first part of the survey examines to what degree the written curriculum is being delivered effectively across the district, and questions are focused on objectives, learning tasks, curriculum alignment, use of best practices, and pacing.
So the first part of our survey is around standards-aligned instruction, and what we're seeing is the work that we've done is showing positive results. As you can see in blue, teachers are clearly communicating the learning objectives, and standards and curriculum are aligned, and this is evident in the classroom. We also know that instructions align with the pacing of the written curriculum, and best practices are being utilized. We're proud of the results and know these are directly connected to the work that has been done at the academic office staff, with the academic office staff, working closely with the coordinators and our staff across the district. Our Goal Team work in year one and two focused on aligning the curriculum to the standards and then to the assessments. We're now in the third year, and we're looking closely at student engagement. So I'm going to pass this on to Erin and let her explain this part.
So while aligning our instruction with our curriculum is very important, we think it's even more important to make sure that instruction is quality instruction. Quality instruction's one of the key drivers of student achievement, and we've identified Marzano's work on student engagement as our instructional focus. We believe that engaged kids are successful kids, and Marzano defines engagement. He says, "In order to figure out if a student's engaged, you ask four questions, and if the kid answers any affirmative to all those questions, a kid is engaged." So, how do I feel? Is there a safe learning environment? Am I interested? Are there activities that pique the student's interest? Is it student-centered learning? Is it important and relevant? Connections to the real world are really important for students to see the meaning and value of what they do. And the final piece is self-efficacy. So do kids feel confident and comfortable with the learning material? Is the instruction provide scaffolding so that kids feel like they can tackle any task? So, we really focused on student engagement. We wanted this survey to reflect that. So one of the questions on our survey is, does the learning task have an explicit real-world connection? We're doing pretty well in this area, because it's been a focus for a few years now. A second question is, does the learning task include purposeful and explicit connections with individual students' lives and ambitions? This is very important for kids to see the meaning of what they're doing. And you might notice that we're focusing on the learning task, because what's important is not what the teacher's doing, it's what the student is doing in the classroom. So most of our questions are designed around looking at the task. The next question was, to what extent are students offered a personalized learning choice? And this is an area, we see an opportunity for improvement at the high school, and this data is going to inform our professional learning next year. We think that we have a real opportunity to provide students with more choices and to empower students over their learning. And that's just one example of how we could use this survey data to inform our professional learning. And finally, the last question here is, based on DOK, is the learning task cognitively challenging? It's very important for the kids to be appropriately challenged, kind of that Goldilocks zone of challenge, for them to grow. Final question I'll highlight is, does the task promote self-efficacy? That is that sense that the kid feels they can accomplish, they can learn, they can face challenges and be successful. This was our focus at the high school this year. We worked with Carol Dweck's work on growth mindset. That was our professional learning focus. We worked on that with the kids, and we saw some growth in this area.
So what we've learned is that our instruct, can you hear me?
Yes. Instruction has trended towards becoming more student-centered. Instruction includes strong real-world connections. Teachers are promoting confidence and independence in the classroom, as we just talked about with that growth mindset, and personalized learning is an area for growth. So we'll continue to collect that data and use it to inform our professional learning, and we thank you for the opportunity to share our work with you tonight.
Any questions, Ms. Riley?
Not really a question, but what I really like seeing Goal Team, and then now Goal Team Three, is that each Goal Team is getting input from every grade level, which helps to support like a seamless continuation of the goals as a student progresses on through their career. And I think what you guys are doing are great, and you have tangible metrics to look at to help us out. That's, you guys are doing great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So like I mentioned to Goal Team One, I'll mention at the end to Goal Team Three. Keep up the good work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for all the extra you do.
Thank you.
Mr. Drezick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And one last time, I know I said it earlier, but they all have day jobs. So I appreciate the kind words that you expressed to these guys, but I can't tell you how thankful and proud Andy and I are to have such dedicated educators still working for us, because like I said, this is not something that they necessarily signed up to do. But we did give them a challenge at the beginning of this year, and one of them was, Charlotte, you just beat me to the point, you got through this whole thing without taking one of my punchlines. One of the challenges was that we wanted to have something tangible. It wasn't just to set out a goal and look at the process, but It wasn't just to set out a goal and look at the process, but we wanted to have something that was tangible that directly correlates to kids benefiting from. And they came up with that on their own. So, thank you guys for all the work that you've put into it. And there's half, so you guys are now can breathe the rest of the year because now your colleagues have to come and do for Goal Two and Four. So, thank you. And lastly, our last adult for the evening that we're going to have as a special guest, we're welcome Patrice McCarthy, who is the Deputy Director and General Counsel for CAAB, as well as the past Chairman for the National School Board Association Council of School Attorneys to tonight's meeting. She's here to discuss the 2018 legislative priorities with the board, also to ask any additional questions. And though I swore I would never use this word again in public, I do appreciate Ms. McCarthy's patience in trying to get here. She was previously scheduled, I think, three other times, but Mother Nature got in the way. So, I thank Patrice for showing and I will turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. And thank you for having me this evening. I'm glad that the weather has finally cooperated. I commend you for not only hearing about the wonderful things that are happening in your schools, but also being interested in happening, in what's happening at the state level. And I realize that your staff is doing such a wonderful job that it makes that a very hard act for me to follow. So, at the end of my presentation, you may not say, gee, that's wonderful news. Thank you for sharing that with us. But my job is to give you the lay of the land. We are now two weeks from the end of the legislative session on May 9. So, I'm just going to highlight a few of the things in the advocacy highlights that I've handed out to you. This is an evolving process. The House was in until about 5:00 this afternoon and the Senate adjourned at about 6:20. So, we're constantly updating the status of issues. We did do a webinar this morning, giving an overview of the legislative issues at this point, and that is archived on the CAAB website. So, if you have any desire for any, you know, deeper information, and I'll certainly be happy to answer any questions tonight as well. The budget is obviously the biggest issue on everyone's mind. On Friday, the Appropriations Committee did report out a budget with votes from the House Democrats to send a budget revision to the floor of the House. Now, remember, there is a budget in place, a state budget, for the upcoming fiscal year because they adopt, ultimately adopted the biennial budget late in 2017. They are now looking at adjustments to that. What I have to say is, everything is still in flux because there were obviously not enough votes, even within the Democratic House and Senate Caucus, to put a full vote of the committee. They had to divide the committee in order to get something out. So, the House voted separately and there were enough votes to send this version to the House floor. There was also a vote on a Republican budget amendment that failed to get out of the Appropriations Committee by just two votes. So, those two documents really are the, what will begin the discussions between the leadership of the House and Senate, Democratic and Republican. So, just a couple of highlights of what did come out of the Appropriations Committee. An increase in the ECS grant of $63 million, provision that unlike current law, no community would be zeroed out in their ECS aid. All communities would receive some ECS support. And that is true in both the Democratic and the Republican budget proposals. An increase in the funding for magnet schools of $18.5 million. Restoration of funding for TEAM, that's the Beginning Educator Support Program, where the law still requires that districts provide a $500 stipend to mentor teachers, but the budget that was adopted in the fall of 2017 withdrew the state funding for that. This proposal would restore that funding and that amounts to $1.5 million statewide. And there's also a small reduction in the charter school funding of $1.2 million. So, this obviously is something that's going to be, will continue to be debated probably through much of the next two weeks. I would not anticipate an actual vote in either the House or Senate until pretty close to adjournment because as you all know, that's usually the way negotiations, whether it be collective bargaining at the local level or budget negotiations at the state level. I want to turn to the other document, which we updated this afternoon. And this was an advocacy highlights earlier in April that reflects a number of mandates that are being considered by the legislature. And I'm just going to highlight a couple of them. I won't go through every one. The Senate Bill 453, Senate Bill 453, an Act Concerning Classroom Safety and Disruptive Behavior. We all care about the safety of our educators and our students. This bill, however, would present significant logistical challenges at the local level. And this is something we often see, that well-intentioned legislation, when it gets to implementing it in an actual building, can become very problematic. Among the provisions of this bill is it would allow a classroom teacher to remove a disruptive student, and that classroom teacher would be the one that could determine when the student could return to the classroom. The student would obviously have to continue to be educated. The bill spells out various options, such as placing them in a different classroom, alternative education, in-school suspension, which we know is not necessarily the most effective method of supporting students. Ultimately, our concern is that we're going to have some students that are essentially left in limbo with, if they're not by decision of their classroom teacher, if they're determined to be too disruptive to be in the classroom, we need someplace for them to be, to be educated. So, we continue to discuss those concerns with legislators. The next bill, Senate Bill 490, concerns shared municipal services and local governments. Again, something that we all support. Many districts are working very cooperatively, town board, board with other boards to share services to control expenses. This bill, however, in its current form, makes, the Board of Education requires that they would use municipal services or municipal contracts if they were equivalent and were lower cost. And obviously, the concern there is, education is a specialized activity and determining equivalency could be problematic. These partnerships and collaborations obviously work best when everyone is an equal partner in making a decision about what will work. Has Bill 5170, an Act Concerning Students' Right to Privacy and Their Mobile Electronic Devices. Again, we are very supportive and we know boards are very supportive of the, of student privacy. This bill is still a work in progress. It's improving as it moves along through the process, but it would put some processes and procedures in place around the ability of a teacher, administrator, or coach to take a device from a student and search that device. What we're trying to make sure is that while we're respecting student privacy, we're not tying the hands of school staff when they need to look at a device to determine whether or not there's a pending safety risk, for example. There are a couple of other issues that, and actually, there's one mandate on this list, the very last one, Has Bill 5462. This would have expanded the age range for which you would be required to provide transition services to special education students. And that bill actually was referred to the Appropriations Committee, which did not report it back out. So, it died in the committee. We're also working on the issue of minority teacher recruitment. There are, there's a legislative initiative that would help support districts' ability to, for instance, have paraprofessionals who may already have a bachelor's degree or are working in your building but lack the credentials to become a classroom teacher. Give them opportunities to obtain that certification. And looking at some other vehicles that would help support the, expanding the pool of candidates representing diverse groups. And finally, fingerprinting. We had a meeting this afternoon, workshop for school district administrative office professionals. And this was the hottest issue that was discussed. The restrictions now on the regional service centers, which had been doing fingerprinting and had been able to provide that, the results of that fingerprinting to multiple employers. This really affects substitute teachers as well as individuals in teacher prep programs who are student teaching or being, serving as interns. We are working with State Department of Education, with the state police, and with the leadership of the Education Committee to try and get this resolved. In this era where everyone is trying to do things as efficiently and as collaboratively as possible, this seems to have gone in the wrong direction recently. And there's also obviously concern about the turnaround time for getting back the results when the fingerprints have been submitted. So, those are the big issues that you look at the length of time left in the legislative session and the host of issues that the legislature is still dealing with. My best prediction is, some of these issues will be addressed, some will be modified, and some will be left for the 2019 legislative session. We will be doing a legislative wrap-up workshop on May 15. And at that point, we'll be able to give you really definitive answers as to what has transpired. But I'm happy to take any questions. And would also say to you that in terms of these mandates that I've gone over, remember that these have not been acted on yet. There has not been final action. So, if you are concerned about these, this is the time to make that call to your legislators, send an email. That matters a lot because those are the issues that then rise up to the, oh, we'd better address this before we adjourn, such as with fingerprinting. Or, gee, there's a lot of concern about this issue, maybe we'd better not vote on it in haste. So, those communications are key and the time is right to do that.
Before we get Mr. Drizik on it.
Thanks, Drizik. Before they get into, because I know they're going to have a lot of questions for it, and I want to make sure we didn't miss two things that you had mentioned. One, on Senate Bill 364, the special education funding, cutting it down to, from 490. First of all, they're aware that they've never actually fully funded access costs to begin with anyway. That's an anomaly. But in particular, and I understand the mandate reporting, the synopsis at the bottom that may not be useful. Does anyone have any idea how to report individual expenditures for each student requiring special education? So, if a student gets resource room twice a week, how in God's name are we supposed to report that? And who's going to fund an additional clerical staff member to do that? I know you know the answer. I'm not putting, it's not her fault. She works for, she's on our team. I just wanted to bring that, because these are some of the things that will come up. And again, just raising the second point on 490, and this has come up before and I've actually had communications with legislators about it. I understand, I think, the purpose of looking at shared services between boards and local governments. But does anyone down there actually realize that most boards of education are actually larger than the municipalities? So, as an example here in Enfield, I know our town utilizes some of our bidding contracts through consortiums like Cracked and things like that anyway. So, we're using a lot of times state bids, which are being approved with DAS, which reports up to these people, yet they're changing legislation to do it backwards. So, those are just two things I wanted to highlight before it got too deep in question.
I share your frustration.
I know you do. That's why I was comfortable saying.
The key word there was backwards, okay? Because that's what Hartford is, is backwards.
It's just two examples, but I just wanted to get on record with how crazy some of these things can get.
All right, who wants to begin? Mr. Dugel or Charlotte? Yeah, Charlotte first.
Well, I'm glad that you brought up the fingerprinting because I wrote down my question because I was reading about that. So, do you know, or know where I can look it up, does that bill also set the price for background check? Or is it just for the fingerprinting itself? And does that also cover volunteers in the school system?
My understanding is that the statute does not require the fingerprinting of volunteers, but that that is a local decision. So, if you by policy require fingerprinting of volunteers, that's, that's your opportunity. The issue of the fees is determined by the state police. The real issue is that for the, for instance, the prospective substitute teacher, who if they have to pay the fee for each community where they are going to work, even though, you know, the results are going to be the same, they're going to be fingerprinted on Monday in five different communities at the local police department and have to pay five times. That's, that's something that we hope to be able to deal with through this legislation. But not, we're not going to try and get into the actual setting of the fees because that really is a matter of, of the funding for the, the resources that the state police use.
Patrice, is that also, within the legislations that address who the results can be shared with as well? I know that was a point of contention. Like, for us, we use Kelly Services.
Yep.
So, traditionally, there are Kelly employees, fingerprinting goes through Kelly Services. However, Kelly wasn't authorized to get the results. So, as Enfield Board of Education, we were supposed to be checking the results for people who worked through a vendor through us. Again, backwards, but I know that was part of the conversation with this.
And that is still part of the conversation. And that language is, I got another draft of the language just before I came here tonight. So, we're trying to address as many of the issues as we can and get it done before May 9.
Mr. Dugel?
Hi, Patrice.
How are you?
Welcome. And please don't take any of my comments as assault on you. We know you're one of the good guys, okay? But those of us that have been kicking around for a few years here have seen the same issues going around. In terms of the sub-fees, we're running, not only the thing with the, with Kelly, that they weren't authorized to get them, but our police really don't have the manpower or woman power to do these. And nor do they want to do it because we're doing pairs, we're doing secretary, we're doing every new hire that's coming in there plus volunteers. And the state police doesn't have, you know, it all comes down to dollars. And I don't see any dollar sign here that says that they're going to help out to deal with this. So, I have a thing against mandates because unless the dollars follow along with the mandates. Looking at Senate Bill 453, the safety and disruptive behavior, I've been out for seven years retired, but I thought the rules were that, you know, you had to have an 092 certificate in order to suspend somebody. Unless I'm reading, just a quick glance, okay? And then I don't, I see something moving away from the people who probably understand the legal part of suspension, whether it's good or bad. There's some ramifications there. And I don't see that dealt with here. Am I misreading it or?
Well, if a teacher removed a student from the classroom, that wouldn't in and of itself constitute a suspension. It would still, a suspension, the building administrator would then have to figure out what to do with the student, whether it be in-school suspension, place the student in another classroom. Of course, that makes me think, how's that going to work out? If Mrs. Jones finds the student so disruptive, is Mrs. Smith in the classroom next door going to say, this will work out fine? One of the concerns that I've heard in districts around the state is, they don't have the other professionals because of budget constraints in the building, you know, a social worker, a mental health professional that could help intervene with these students. And therefore, everyone's left in limbo.
Or do an investigation or go, I mean, I'm just looking down the line and saying, the other, the other issue is, I mean, I don't really have an issue with that in terms of assaults or things like that. That's a whole nother thing. But whatever's in that other cloud of things that can happen that might get a youngster sent out of the classroom and then the kid can't get back in without this, the teacher's, you know, sign off. I just think there's some other steps in there. Mental health, you know, guidance counselors, transition counselors, whatever, needs to be in there. So, I have a hard time seeing how that's going to pass muster to get through. The other one, one of my favorites, it's not here, but it's really talking about the money that's, it is here, the money going to the magnet schools. Okay, our pet peeve is, is that we don't find out, they don't tell us who the kids are they're taking of ours. And we're doing our budget in May and June. I wish we could do it early because we're all doing it backwards. But we don't find out until over the summer or by, when they, when they don't show up in September. Have they addressed that pet peeve? If they want to donate money to it, that's one thing. But we don't know, we have to If they want to donate money to it, that's one thing, but we don't know, we have to account for that youngster unless we know that that youngster's not going to be here. Are they dealing with that issue at all?
There is not legislation that addresses that, no.
Do they even talk about it? Because we've been complaining to our legislators forever.
Right. They don't talk about it very much at the state level. They talk about, I hear it a lot at the local level.
Okay. And the electronic devices, I mean, I think we're all about the privacy issue, I kind of liked it better like 10, 15 years ago, when we didn't have them in the classroom. But I certainly understand the learning thing for mobile devices in a classroom. But how do you deal with that, how are they going to deal with that, you know, removing it? A whole bunch of steps you have to have in terms of due process before you take something that belongs to somebody.
And again, we're still working on that language to try and streamline, if something is going to pass, to streamline it as much as possible, so that there is an appropriate balance between the student right to privacy and the legitimate need of school staff to maintain a safe environment.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Sounds like fun. I could go on, but I'll let some other folks talk. Thank you very much for all you do.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Pope.
I just have a couple of quick comments that I suppose I'd like to sort of have on the record for my thoughts here. One is about Senate Bill 453, the classroom safety and disruptive behavior. I have sat here as a board member and listened to students and their families speak to me about feeling like classroom teachers have targeted them, or do not treat them fairly compared to other students. And I just see an incredible conflict of interest when you take away the ability to mediate the response to a student who might have an escalated situation in the classroom. And while I certainly promote the safety of all of the staff that work in our schools, you know, when you hear these sorts of reports, and these personal accounts, and these disagreements, I cannot help but think that it's wildly inappropriate to have the decision to return to a classroom made by one person at the end of the day. So I just needed to put that out there and recognize that, in this chair, I've heard that there are difficulties with these situations. And, you know, however true or untrue they may be, I've heard them, which means someone's been affected by them, and I can't let that go unaddressed. I'm also a little concerned, we didn't talk about it much, it's just a quick one, but House Bill 5452 regarding the task force on life-threatening food allergies in schools, there's proposed language to remove the ability of a bus driver to administer medication. And I'd like to just ask the general question, and I assume you do not know the answer, if the bus driver cannot administer medication, which may or may not even be life-saving to a student while on the bus, who will?
Well, what this bill originally, what this refers to is, language in the original bill would have required that bus drivers be trained in the administration of medication. When the bill came out of committee, that mandate was removed from the bill. So it doesn't prohibit, it's silent on the issue of bus drivers administering.
Okay, so at this time, are they allowed to, or not allowed?
It would have to be by local policy.
Okay.
There was a lot of concern expressed by bus drivers about the multiple responsibilities that they are expected to manage on a bus full of students, and what skills and techniques they would need in order to be able to help a child who needed medication.
Yeah, and I totally respect the fact that they have a lot to deal with in a small amount of time, but I just, anytime we're in a situation where we have a student who may require assistance like that, you know, my first instinct is to say, can we make sure we have someone to help them? So, you know, certainly that's important to me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're doing a great job for us down there, and keep up the good work.
Well, thank you. I'm glad you're still able to say that.
Anything through our superintendent that you can pass, want to pass on to us, please feel free.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Oh, Mr. Neville, I'm sorry.
Earlier on, and Chris, please, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, we were talking about signing off on the goals, is that coming up? I was just going to bring it up, so I was just hitting the button. Sorry.
Go for it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrice. As Mr. Neville stated at, when we first, when the board first requested Patrice's presence at one of the meetings, I shared with you Cave's 2018 legislative priorities. At the time, the board expressed interest in possibly signing a letter of support for that. If that's something that you were still indeed interested in doing, we, I spoke with Mr. Rader as well, and he welcomed that, especially now as they're going through, finishing, wrapping up the legislative session. So if the board is interested in doing that, we could certainly have either the chairman write on behalf of the board, and the board can sign off on behalf of the board if they wish.
What's the consensus? We go for it?
I, these people are working for us. They're trying to help us out.
I want to support them in any way we can. Consensus is, yes, we'll sign off.
We'll send a draft of leadership tomorrow, and then we'll get that off to Cave.
Sounds great. Thank you.
So we at number seven now?
Yep.
I lost track. Mr. Dreszek.
Mr. Chairman, both of our student representatives are present this evening, so you can start with them.
Megan, you started last time, so we'll have Matt start this time. Go ahead, Matt.
Thank you very much. We have two pieces of pretty lighthearted news. Junior prom was a few weeks ago, it went very well. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend, but I will be attending senior prom, and I heard great things about junior prom. We also had Spirit Week the week before April vacation, it went very well also. I think that's a really good unifying thing for our school. And some good upcoming news is that the Enfield High School lamplighters are putting on a production of The Music Man. That is coming up this weekend, Friday, April 27th at 7:00 PM, and Saturday at 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM, and that's in the Enfield High School auditorium.
Please, people, that's a great production, so, they do a great job at those, so, whatever you can do. Megan.
All right, so, third quarter ended, I believe, last week, I think, if I've got my weeks correct. Everyone received their report cards, I believe everyone did very well. The honor roll came out, too, high honors and honors. Senior prom is coming up, it's May 11th, and we started selling tickets yesterday. AP testing starts May 7th, and the senior class is also hosting a fundraiser tomorrow from 5:00 to 8:00 at Red Robin, and would love everyone to come and support. 10%, I believe, goes towards, every 10% of the bill, if you give them a little coupon, it goes towards the graduating class of 2018. So we would love it for everyone to come out.
And that also is a great event, she does a great job over there for us, so. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's appropriate with Patrice being here today, but the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education has awarded two Enfield High School students their Student Leadership Award for 2018. Elizabeth Collins and Nicholas Martin were nominated by Principal Clark for exhibiting the following leadership qualities: willingness to take on challenges, capability to make difficult decisions, concern for others, ability to work with others, willingness to commit to a project, diplomacy, ability to understand issues clearly, and ability to honor a commitment. Ms. Collins and Mr. Martin will be awarded these certificates at the June 13th awards and scholarship night at Enfield High School, so we congratulate our two Enfield High School students. Kindergarten registration, Enfield Public Schools will hold the 2018-19 kindergarten registration on Monday, April 30th, at the Enfield Municipal Annex, building located at 124 North Maple Street, otherwise known as the former Fermi High School. And closing your packet is the press release with the different, additional information. There's a series of community conversations, budget workshops, special board meetings, and public hearings with the town council coming up, they're all listed in your packet. I'll just mention that your first public Board of Education special meeting will be prior to the public hearing on May 2nd at 5:30. After that, board members are invited to attend the 2018-19 public, budget public hearing on May 2nd at 7:00 PM in the Enfield High School auditorium. Public hearing is open to the public, and is an opportunity for community members to address members of the town council and the Board of Education regarding the 2018-19 budget. The board and council will also hold a budget workshop on May 3rd at 6:30 PM in the Enfield Room, and the list of the April and May events is also in your packet. That concludes superintendent's report. Oh, I'm sorry, I have one more additional item that was not on here. I was notified very early last night, or early this morning, or late last night, that our Buzz Robotics program competed in a national competition in Houston, and they actually lost in the finals of their field, but they medaled for the first time in quite some time. So I congratulate our kids at Buzz, I had the opportunity to go up and see them at BU over April break. Those kids did a fantastic job, I don't know how they do it, but at some point, I'd like to get those kids in front of you and show you exactly the hard work and dedication that went into that. So, congratulations to Buzz if you're watching.
Quick question, all right, graduation, June 21st, correct?
Graduation is June 21st. I'm not making a prediction as to where it will be held, I'm just going to state it's outside.
And, I don't know if I should say, seniors are required to come to school till the last day of school, correct? What are the seniors asked of me, so I'm just, I don't know if we should probably talk about this.
We will offer programming for seniors, that our state law requires that students attend 180 call, 180 school days per year. We will have programming for seniors after graduation, and I know that the administration at Enfield High School will be having conversations with seniors in the coming weeks about the things that will be offered, and the requests that, what the requirements will be.
Leave it at that. Any other questions for the superintendent? Audiences. And reminder, it's a three-minute, no personalities, the only one that signed up, I can't, I can't, I'm sorry, I'm not going to butcher your name.
Celine.
Celine?
Colleen Siniglio.
Just repeat your name for the record.
Colleen Siniglio.
Name and address for the record, please.
10 Shannon, or Colleen Siniglio, 10 Shannon Drive.
Thank you.
I have three daughters, one is a graduate of the Enfield High School student, school system, and she's at Westfield State University graduating this year. I have a senior in high school and a sophomore. I'm here tonight because I'm upset about the new science requirements for graduation and how they're being implemented. I am upset that halfway through my daughter's high school education, we went from three credits in science to three specific courses, and that her class and all classes after hers are being tracked. When the sophomore class went into guidance to sign up for classes this month, many of them were told they must take honors physics if they were in the honors track, or they must take astronomy and earth science if they are not on the honors track. If we look at the current graduation requirements, all students must take four credits of English, all students must take four credits of math, including algebra and geometry, all students take four years of phys ed, all students must take civics and U.S. history, but all students do not need to take honors physics. Only the students who are on the honors track. Do we now have two different sets of requirements for graduation? Will there be two different diplomas offered? If you take a look at the current science tracking pathway, you can see what I am talking about. The term "pathway" is misleading. There is no option to change paths or directions. Whatever you are placed in, in eighth grade, dictates what you take for your three science credits. If you start in honors bio, you must take honors chem and honors physics. If you start in IPS, you must take biology and astronomy and earth science. You can take additional classes, but you must take those. There are no choices to change levels if you are in that honors track. What happens to the student who is overwhelmed with the honors track? They can't drop down to a lower level. There is only honors physics. You must stay in it. You are not even allowed to take regular physics. It is worth stressing that these tracks are determined in seventh grade. I personally know of two students who would have been placed on the lower track, one being due to laziness and one due to being too social, had this been in place when they were at JFK. The first graduated high school with enough credits to start as a sophomore in college as a savings of $25,000 to her family, and the other one is only one AP test behind her sister. So you must be saying to yourself, wow, she's really wound up about her daughter having to take this one class. Well, I am. My daughter does not want to take physics for her third credit of science, she wants to take AP bio, AP chem, and anatomy and physiology. She is not avoiding science, she needs these classes for her future goals. That means she will have spent seven periods, or almost one quarter, of her high school career in a science classroom. Physics takes away her ability to take an art class. Wasn't that the point of the eight-period day, for students to take more electives and pursue their interests? And what about flexibility? I cannot stress enough that in this current tracking, there is no options for students who struggle in either honors chem or honors physics. In every other discipline, students have an option. If you struggle in honors English, you can go to average. If you struggle in honors Algebra II, there's a lower-level Algebra II you can take. So why not the same for honors chem and honors physics? The NGSS standards are driving great and needed changes in instruction. Why are they not being applied to regular chem and regular physics so students in the upper track have options if they struggle? I have looked into what the top 25 schools, considered by U.S. News in Connecticut, do, and have been told that we are a leader in implementing the NGSS standards. So I'm not going to share those results. I have also been told, we won't know how this no-option track plays out until we can collect data for a few years. My children have received an amazing education from the Enfield school system. I considered not coming tonight. I know as a parent, I can go to guidance and override my daughter taking honors physics next year, and at this point, that is what I'm considering. But I came tonight because I am concerned about all those other students who are in the honors no-option track if they struggle. Thank you.
Thank you. Public communication. Last time. Public communication's closed. Number nine, board member comments. Mr. Rutledge, would you like to start?
I don't.
Okay. Ms. Riley, would you like to start?
Sure, I'll go. Okay. Well, first of all, welcome back. I hope everybody had a great April vacation, and I wanted to say, congratulations to Ashley and her family. She just had a baby two weeks ago, and she's here with us, so congratulations to them. I also wanted to say, a little bit early, but congratulations to you, Mr. Chairman, and your family. Your daughter's graduating from college next week, and that's wonderful, so congratulations to you guys. I wanted to thank the students at Enfield Street School for their sweet thank-you cards from when I read to them, I'm saving all of them, they're wonderful. I wanted to thank all the schools and staff for their board appreciation gifts, I really enjoyed all of them. The Henry Barnard PTO is looking for more parent volunteers and parents to sign up for some open board positions, that'll be coming up at next month's PTO meeting. Also wanted to say kudos to all the students and staff on their box top submissions, I've never seen or counted that many box tops, so keep up the great job. I went to the last policy meeting, and it was great to see the open exchange of ideas and suggestions between the committee members and public that came and participated. That's really the kind of productive collaboration that I had always envisioned that we would be able to do on the board. I went to the special kite meeting, and I met a lot of people from various community organizations. There was a lot of sharing of ideas. It feels kind of redundant to say this, but it was another display of community collaboration to make Enfield a great place to be. I also went on the facility tours with the Joint Facilities Committee, it was a couple of Saturdays in a row. Obviously, I had some people here with me. I thought that I knew a lot about our town, but I learned so much about all the different departments in our town, and just how much we provide as a town. It was really eye-opening when you see it right there in front of you firsthand, just how much we really do. And then you hear about all the great things that the staff does, and how talented they are, and a lot of them are actual Enfield residents. We just have really talented people that live here and are committed to the town, and I just wanted to say thank you to all of them as well. I'm almost done, I promise. We also had a joint school security meeting. The information provided was pretty thorough, and the new police chief did a great job. I wish that more people had came to show up, but you can also catch it on YouTube and watch. I highly suggest checking it out if you're interested in it, it was a very informative meeting. And finally, last Friday, Board of Ed leadership got to go to Enfield High and have a panel discussion with the student body. On... discussion with the student body on the walkout day. I was very, very impressed with the fact that it was organized by and for the students. Everyone was respectful and had great questions and opinions. I wanted to reach out and say that the organizers, I wanted to thank you personally for demonstrating initiative and passion and showing how to debate effectively while remaining respectful to differing opinions. You have set a great example for your peers, and I was really impressed because some adults can't even achieve that level of debate with respect. So thank you, and I look forward to seeing you doing great things for your generation. And that's my comments for today.
So let's move to number 10, because we've already, she's already said them all. Who wants to go next? Mr. Ryder.
So I came to the Board of Ed meeting tonight straight from Eli Whitney, where we had the grade-four volleyball game to support one of our students who has come down with cancer this school year, who I knew actually from Hazardville, who's now in fourth grade, same age as my daughter. So it was, it was a great event. There are Donovan Strong bracelets and T-shirts available, and I just wanted to send out my personal well wishes to this young man and his mom, who I know from PLA, and his family, who I know from, again, Hazardville and Eli Whitney. Last night, they did the same thing, but it was a grade-three volleyball night. Tomorrow's a grade-five volleyball night. The students are all doing a penny challenge, school-wide, all three grades. I spoke with their PE teacher, who's been one of the driving forces for this fundraiser, and she couldn't even count all the donations that have come in already. Even by last Friday, before it officially kicked off this week, the numbers were great, the support was great, the community support was great. I've gotten phone calls from a couple of local restaurants, like Angelina's, and a couple of car dealerships just across the board have asked, hey, what can we do? What do they need? So if you want to email me at my email address and you want to get in touch with the school, please, please do so. Let me know. They're also doing their book fair this week at Eli Whitney, starting tomorrow, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday during the day. Class schedule visits are available on Facebook and on our website. And then Friday night, there's a bingo night where we're also inviting all the Hazardville second graders, so they can get a chance to see the school on an informal basis, so that way it's a little less scary when you go in September. You've already seen the building, you've had some fun, you got a, you know, a feel for where you're going to be in September. So I think that's a great idea for all the grade-three through five schools to do something towards the end of their school year, where they invite the incoming second graders from, from the K-2 schools. As a PTO, working with your sister schools is something that we're very proud of at Hazardville and Eli Whitney. As Mr. Dreszek mentioned, there is a public forum to discuss the budget. There's one tomorrow at Henry Barnard at 7:00, and then there's one again next Wednesday at the high school. I personally won't be able to be there tomorrow night, but if you have any questions, you can email me, or I will be there in person next week at the high school. And I think that's it for this week. Other than mentioning that the one-book-three schools for all the grades three through five schools, if you're going to RSVP for next week events, please do so by tomorrow. Tomorrow's also an early release day, as a reminder, for all schools. So please get your RSVPs in if you're in the grade-three through five schools for next week on May 3rd for our literacy night. It's a great event, and I know all the three, five schools looking forward to that, and all the reading teachers have reached out to many of us. I know I'm reading at Eli Whitney, and so it's a, it's a great night. So thank you very much. That's it for this week.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder. Mr. Neville.
First of all, thanks to Kathy for getting our name tags for our, our student reps. I appreciate it, and I'm sure they do too. It's, they, they do a good job for us, and I just, I think it's good to have them recognized. Also, I want to thank John Dag. You know, Chris has, has talked about his skills and the dedication he has to our, to our school system, the good things that go on there, and the things that he was talking about tonight, the things that we as a committee, the curriculum committee, wanted him to get out here, was to highlight that. I think we all get tired of hearing that good things don't happen here, that this school isn't that strong. And when you hear people like this talk about the offerings that we have that other people just don't have, okay? It makes me proud, but I know it goes on anyway, and I just get angry when people, you know, just callously say, well, yeah, what do you guys do here? We do a lot, and our teachers do a lot, and our administrators do a lot. And so I like to showcase it, and I think we're proud of them, and I, and I think the Enfield public should know about it, and I think they will be proud of them as well. Like the rest of you, I was really touched by the student notes and the, the gifts we got for Board of Ed Appreciation Week. I don't think any of us expected anything. We do this for other reasons. You know, we think it's important, we think, and we are volunteers, but I think we step up because it's important to us. And this particular board works very, very well together and has a common vision of what we want, and we want the best for this town. So I'd like to thank all of them for, for doing it. It's really touching to read some of the notes and to, and to see the kids, but, but we do appreciate it. I'd like to thank the goal teams. I've been kicking around for a lot of years. I know what the administrators do, so, you know, I, it's not, it's not part of their paycheck, it's the fact that they're, they're jumping in, they see a need, and they jump on it, period, and, and they do an exceptional job. I'm impressed with the, what they've done just in two-thirds of a year. Can you imagine what happens over the next, next year or two? So I'd like to thank all of them for their, their dedication. It's because we hire good people, and we have good staff here. Thanks to you guys as well. Like some of us here, three or four of us here, we went on the facility tours. It was impressive, okay? And I think we're finally taking an in-depth look at, at the issues that we have to deal with in terms of infrastructure for this community. And they've been, unfortunately, kicked down the road, they've kicked the can down the road for too many years. We have things we have to do, and we have to have a plan to do it. And I think this particular committee, I think, is working quite well towards that goal. So I invite anybody to come to our meetings and hear what we're talking about. It's too important not to do that. The panel discussion, as Charlotte had said, I mean, once again, our students step up, and, and we, we see how respectful, how articulate they are about talking about issues that concern all of us. And I'm very, very proud of them, and I think we all are. In terms of the science thing that Colleen brought up to us, I have more questions than answers, and before I respond to it in any way, I, I need to get those questions answered. And I, I will be seeking that out through the Curriculum Committee. And finally, on my way out the door tonight, I saw Sarah on TV, okay, and talking about one of the subjects that she's very, very skilled at and lives with in terms of autism. Congratulations. I think you had a message to deliver, and I was very proud to see it, and I'm proud of you. So keep up the good work. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Neville. Any comments, Ms. Hernandez?
I do. And I'm going to do my best to not be emotional during this, though I'm going to fail.
Mike is yours, you could be whatever way you wish.
Thank you, Walter. I just want to say, this is autism, if it's awareness or acceptance, I prefer acceptance. So this is Autism Acceptance Month, and we don't talk about the fact that I am on the spectrum a lot on the board, because it really doesn't impact our work. And I want to say thank you for that, even though I, you know, being on the spectrum is something about who I am. I appreciate that everybody on the board, everybody in Enfield Public Schools, the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, everybody has just treated me with respect as an equal contributing member, and that means so much for the community, and I don't think that I realized that until today. I had an opportunity to go to High Road School in Wallingford, which is a school, a specialized school for students who have different, differing abilities. And so I talked a little bit about being autistic and what it looks like as an adult to be autistic, because we don't talk about that a lot. And it was a really good talk, but what happened after was really special for me. There were students who were coming up and saying what it meant to them and how it kind of opened their, their eyes to possibilities and that they didn't think that existed before. And I, it was a reminder how important it is to be visible, to be, because, because representation matters. And so I thank the people of Enfield for electing me for this position. I thank my fellow board members for respecting me in this position, and together, we are all truly making a difference, and we are truly creating an inclusive community that highlights the strengths of all individuals. And so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Ms. LeBlanc?
Yep, a few things. While I was tracking the tardies, I did not track that the report cards came out, so I owe you one, Megan. Thank you for that. I would also like to say congrats to Ashley. I met the new beautiful little baby, and I'm so jealous because she's a beautiful little baby. I also want to mention that JFK, they're having a purse bingo Friday night at Mount Carmel, and the viewing starts at 6:00. Did I say it was a purse bingo? It's a purse bingo, so if you need tickets, you can contact anyone if you go to the JFK PTO website. Congratulations to the JFK Band, who performed in Boston this past weekend. It was very exciting, and they, they did a wonderful job. I also have a few questions about the, the science track, because personally, I've had two kids go through honors physics, and it's, it's a very difficult class, and it hasn't been easy, and I'm not saying that anything that's honors should be easy, but I know it's a very, very tough course, and to have to be forced into taking it, I'm not sure that, that, that's the right thing, but I don't know enough about it to comment more than that, but I, I guess I can understand her frustration as far as that goes. And I don't think, I don't think I have anything else. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LeBlanc. Ms. Renier.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Kathy for all your hard work. Tomorrow's Administrative Day, and you come here, you get everything out for us, you give us the call and make sure that we're here on time. You're like the mother that a lot of us have on a multiple basis, and we greatly appreciate all the work that you do for us. So thank you. So if the camera can, can pan to her and show the greatness of Kathy, we appreciate that, so thank you. And all the hard-working administrative staff out there at Central Office and all, in all the schools. I'd also like to thank Mr. Dag, who gave a presentation, and before he left, the email with the presentation was on our iPads. So that's done already? Amazing. That is, that's great. Hazardville Memorial had a PTO meeting. They also had a assembly on Friday for Earth Day with the kindergarten class, and it was kind of cool. The PTO purchased two gym carts for the school, because currently, the playground at Hazardville could, could use some updating and, and a new playscape that Town Council's working on. So in the meantime, the PTO had noticed the deficits of playtime, so they purchased these carts for the kids that have footballs, hula hoops, volleyballs, footballs, jump ropes, baseball, wiffle ball, you name it, they have the whole gamut. So the, incorporating the PBIS program, they gave the presentation, and the kindergartners went out there and showed everyone how to use the hula hoops. So as part of introducing this to the class. So I know the whole school appreciates that, as, as does myself, being a parent of a student there. Also, I wanted to make note of the Eli Whitney bingo. I know Scott had mentioned it, but that was also mentioned in the PTO meeting at Hazardville Memorial, so for all the second graders that are going to Eli Whitney next year, it's a great transition and a good night to have. And at that point, this is it, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Renier. Ms. Moon.
Well, a lot of the comments that I wanted to make have kind of already been said by everyone else, and that's sort of the danger of going late in the game here. But thanks to everyone for their well wishes for our family. It's much appreciated. Thank you again, as Rich said, to all of our administrative professionals. Everything that you do is critical to making our world go around every day in EPS, so it's definitely not work that's going unnoticed. Thank you for that. A little comment about some happenings at Enfield Street School. Really exciting work by the PTO. You know, the PTO at Enfield Street just cranks it out, and the, the parent participation is stellar. So today, the students got to have a little concert, an unexpected concert by Red Grammar. Many of you may know, he's a children's music artist. So the PTO actually funded him to come and perform throughout the day today for the various classes at Enfield Street School, which is super exciting and just a great blessing, a great way to mix things up a little bit, and give the kids something to really look forward to and enjoy in their day. So again, to everyone in the PTO and all the parents who support the PTO activities, thank you so much for everything that you do. It's just awesome to give the kids some gifts like this during their day. So I also want to thank Colleen for coming up, sharing her concerns about the science track. It's something to chew on, something I'm sure we will look at in curriculum and try to get some answers about. And really great information, again, from Mr. Dag, from Patrice with Cabe, our goal teams, just all of the great work is so inspiring, and, you know, we're really making a lot of progress and making, doing a lot of good things, so, you know, thank you for all of your efforts.
Thank you. Mr. Rutledge, you want to try it in or no?
Um, no, I'm sorry.
You're good? Okay. All right, you've all mentioned everything. The only thing I'm going to say is, is we all got a letter in the mail, and it just disheartens me that someone takes the time to write a letter and just can't put a signature on the bottom. And to me, that letter is meaningless. So if you want to write to us, fine, and we're not going to come out here and publicize your name and who writes to us, but just sign the letter, that's all. It's all we ask, is just sign the letter. I mean, tell us who you are, and, and we can communicate and maybe resolve something, but to take the time to send to all of us and to the council too, I wish I had my little trashcan here and, and the letter, because that's what I would, that's what I would have done with it, so. And that's all I had to say. So we're at number 10, unfinished business, policy revision, approval of 1,000 series, second reading. Mr. Renier, would you like to comment?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the last meeting that we had, we had second reading for the 1,000 series, so at this moment, I would like to make a motion to put back on the table approving the 1,000 series.
So moved by Ms., Ms. Riley, seconded by Mr. Neville, to take it off the table?
Back on the table.
Or put it back on the table? Yeah, well, one of the two. Somewhere. Under the table, all right? Want that? Is this a hand vote?
Whatever you want to do is fine.
Yeah, so to, to, to put it on the table?
Back on the table.
All right, so we're all, we're all approved. Okay, so now we need a motion to approve it. Moved by Mr. Neville, seconded by Ms. Riley. Any discussion on the revisions? There was a lot in red, there was a lot of Chairman Kostoff, but that's hearsay, no-say, but that's...
So I would just like to make a comment that Ms. Grant was, she had come out to our meeting and was very beneficial in regards to updating these policies. And also, in, in some of the policies, especially in Policy 1221, what, what the Policy Committee did, and, and Ms. Grant had brought this to our attention, and it shoots the importance of making sure that our policies are not going to be dictated by a political party. So in regards to Policy 1221, what it is doing is, for a community, getting a community group together, it's going to be the whole board who approves who's going to be on that committee, not just the chairman of the board, just to ensure that we have continuity throughout the entire community and not on a political basis, which our board has been flawlessly in doing it. All, all of us get together, and politics are like on 495 in Worcester. So I just want to make that point known, that for 1221, that was one of the specific things that we had brought up, and that is resonant in a couple of the policies too, that we are, that the decision rests on the board of nine and not with the chairman who's sitting in.
And 495 doesn't go through Worcester.
It's before.
Any other discussion? Kathy, roll call, please.
Mr. Rutledge?
Four.
Mrs. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Renier?
Yes.
Mrs. DePoe?
Yes.
Chairman Crizell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you all, and thank you, thank you, Policy Committee, for that hard work, and thank you to Ms. Grant for coming to the meeting, and that's what first reading is. We put the first reading, so the public can read it, we can read it, and make changes. And that's, the procedure works, so leave it at that. New business, approval of 2018, fiscal year, 2018, 2019, school readiness grant. And we made these people wait for an hour and 50 minutes.
That's my bedtime, I don't know.
I was looking at that saying, what are they here for? How can we move this up?
Why are we here? Why are we here? We're here because you guys have way more fun than Town Council, that's all. Just saying. Haven't been at both this week, just saying. So we're actually here to talk about the school readiness grant.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Dawn Homer-Boothier, Director of Social Services for the town. Deputy Director Humphrey is here as well, he serves as the School Readiness Liaison, and this may be a familiar face to you. Leon Bolio is here, she is our Kite Chair. So this is the collaborative that brings you the school readiness grant each year. There is some information in your packet, but I want to just run it down for you in case you have any questions. We have the opportunity to take state funds and benefit children in Enfield, and we've been doing that through the Enfield Child Development Center since 1999. So this is our, what we call our off year. Last year was a full application. This year, what we have to do is kind of update what we told them last year, confirm some numbers, confirm the slots. We get 28 slots each year that are funded for three- and four-year-olds. They are used for low and moderate income families to supplement tuition. We grind every dime we can out of that grant as we get tighter and tighter fiscally, and we've done that quite successfully. So we are here to ask for your permission for the superintendent to co-sign the renewal grant application along with the town manager, for as long as he's here. We'll get those signatures before Brian goes. And then our grant application is due May 15th, so we're working on that right now.
Excellent. Any questions from the board? So do I have a motion to approve the fiscal year 2018, 2019, school readiness grant? So moved by Mr. Rutledge, seconded by Ms. Riley. Any other discussion? Any comments from the superintendent?
No, I don't feel as bad making Ms. Homer-Boothier wait here, since she subjected me to putting in public against the town manager yesterday, so I think we're even. But no, no comment.
You did great, Chris.
So any other discussion? Kathy, roll call, please.
Mr. Rutledge?
Yes.
Mrs. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mrs. DePoe?
Yes.
Chairman Crizell?
Of course, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you all, and again, send them the bill for the wait. We're not going to pay it, but send them the bill. The 11B, approval of fiscal year 2018, 2018, 2019, Adult Education Continuance PRP Program Enhancement Grant. Mr. Dreszek?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Connecticut State Department of Education has invited the Enfield Adult and Continuing Education to apply for a continuation of a grant that we awarded last year. The grant transition post-secondary education and/or training is funded at the same level of $40,000. We've had, actually been awarded this grant since 2013. So this is a continuation grant application that the board needs to approve.
So do I have a motion? So moved by Mr. Neville, seconded by Mr. Rutledge. Any other discussion? Mr. Neville?
Mr. Dreszek, this is the PEP program that's come before us a number of times. In fact, I was talking to them in your office the other day, and they'd like to come up again, which I would welcome. I think they do a great job, and, you know, they're working hard with their group this year, and I'd love to see them and let the public know what these folks are doing. Another group of unsung heroes that just see a problem and go and solve it. And so I enthusiastically support the grant, and I also, through the chair, to the superintendent, ask that we get them to come before us at some point.
Make it so. Any other discussion? Kathy, roll call, please.
Mr. Rutledge?
Yes.
Mrs. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mr. Renier?
Yes.
Mrs. DePoe?
Yes.
Chairman Crizell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
12, Board Committee Reports, Curriculum.
Meeting, May 1st. Okay, we postponed our meeting, so Ashley could have her baby. No.
Finance?
You could bring the baby, it's okay. If the Senator could bring her child to the Senate, and they could change the rules, we'll certainly allow you to come here.
Finance met on April 16th. Next meeting is May 14th. We're going to have a guest there to discuss the TAG.
Yeah, investment.
Investment portfolio, so if you guys want to come, or if the public wants to come, you're more than welcome. Yes.
Go ahead, please.
Ask a question about that. I was talking to Tina about the TAG program. We were involved with that when we were doing the Simkowitz Grant, and I, and we've talked about it in curriculum earlier this year in terms of getting some more information about it, but also talking about the criteria for it. And just as, I don't think she's talked to you yet, but Tina and I had talked about maybe having a joint meeting, because there's some, in my mind, there's some curriculum implications, and also to talk about what we can do as we move through with the program. I see it, I've always thought that would be expanded, and I frankly, it's been like seven years since I really talked about it in depth. I'm not real, really sure of the criteria that we use for it, so I'd like to hear it. Instead of having two meetings, maybe we could combine and have a joint meeting.
I think that's a great idea. I would love to talk about the TAG program.
How is that technically? Well, if it's a posted meeting, it's a posted meeting, correct?
It stated that there's a possibility of a quorum, so it means a public meeting.
Yeah.
You could have a finance meeting with, and invite the members of the curriculum committee, as long as there's, Kathy always posts it appropriately, that a quorum may be in attendance, so.
So would you get, would you get that, what is it, May 14th?
May 14th.
Would you get that out to all of us? That, I know I get them anyway, but to the rest of them?
Let me just double-check to make sure the appropriate staff can be there to give a proper presentation.
Or we arrange another.
Or vice versa.
Another date, if you had to.
Mr. Rutledge?
I was going to say, is the suggestion on that, since the finance meeting room is a little small?
Well, yeah, you could just move it down a hill, down a hill or something. Any other comments for that? All right, so policy?
Our next meeting is on May 15th.
Okay.
Next day.
Leadership's met, and we did our thing, and we don't have any meetings scheduled, so leave it at that. Joint Facility met, meets every Thursday, just about, and it's been rotating at different locations because of budget meetings here at Town Hall, but I guess this Thursday, it's at JFK Library.
At 6:00.
Yeah, we did, we did, well, we did hire the architect, J CJ, to do the, to do the next study for our, for the JFK referendum, and we're continuing with the, with the roof applications over at Barnard, and we're going through all our buildings. And again, I'd like to add that the tours we did these two weeks, for a town manager that's only been here two years, I think he knows more about this town than anybody in the town, believe it or not. I mean, the man is very knowledgeable, and he will be missed, and I will repeat that more and more before the end of May, so.
I agree. They want to bring up one other thing. One of the things that we looked for at the facilities meeting, we asked the town manager to put together his vision of what the next five or 10 years would be in Enfield, and worked with his staff to do that, and he presented, I think it's, I know we all got copies of the.
I forwarded it to all of you yesterday, by the way, just to have it, but.
But I think it's on the website, too. It's a public document, so I would encourage people to look at it. It's very, very creative, it looks at the town through a very interesting and creative lens, so I'd recommend that you do that. In terms of the meeting that's on this Thursday, it's a workshop meeting. It's going to go longer, because the architect, along with several other architects, are going to come in and present some of the options in some greater detail than they have in the past. So we usually try to go an hour, an hour and 15 minutes. This is probably going to go in excess of two hours, and if you folks want to come, I think you'll find it very interesting, and I think we're very, very impressed with the creativity that we've seen. These guys are amazing, and what they've, the ideas they've thrown out, and it's been a delightful conversation, so I would encourage you to get involved in it at this stage of the game, because we're running out of time.
Yes.
And we need to move this along, so it's going to go fairly quickly, so if you want to be part of it, come on in.
And I apologize before the meeting, because I will not be there, I'll be down in Florida already partaking in my daughter's graduation.
You deserve to be there.
Well, but I hate missing meetings, too, so. If I could split me in two, I would. Enfield High School met this past Thursday. Again, we just had some bills, and leave it at that. I mean, it's, we're winding down, it's, the, Gilbain said that a lot of the contracts are finally getting closed up, so we're winding that project down.
Maybe two more meetings.
Two more meetings like that, yeah. And any other committees? The Talk Too Much Committee, is there one like that? Okay. Number 13, approval of regular meeting minutes for March 27, 2018. So moved by Mr. Rutledge, seconded by Mr. Neville, Ms. LeBlanc. Show of hands, all in favor? I'm not even going to ask for discussion, because we've got to move on. Number 14, approval of accounts and payroll for the month of February and March, 2018. Ms. Riley?
Yep, I have two. The Finance Committee met on April 16th, 2018, to review financial statements for the month of February, year-to-date, and to examine various documents related to finances. Our review concluded that there is nothing significant to report to the board. Motion, I move we accept the superintendent's certification as follows. I hereby certify that in the month of February, total expenditures amount to $4,642,644.17, broken down between payroll totaling $3,926,861.41, and other accounts totaling $715,782.76. All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the books of accounts. Copies of approval for check invoices are properly documented.
Second. Motion by Ms. Riley, seconded by Mr. Rutledge. Any discussion? Show of hands, all in favor? It's 10-0, with Mr. Neville just stepped out, so he's probably 11, so. March, please.
Yes.
Oh, it's only nine. What am I saying, 11? I'm sorry.
You're kind of, you're kind of a negative math.
Eight-zero with nine. I'm counting, I got 11 chairs, I'm sorry.
All right, the Finance Committee met on April 16th, 2018, to review financial statements for the month of March, year-to-date, and to examine various documents related to finances. Our review concluded there is nothing significant to report to the board. I move we accept the superintendent's certification as follows. I hereby certify that in the month of March, total expenditures amount to $8,553,602.85, broken down between payroll totaling $5,912,383.89, and other accounts totaling $2,641,218.96. All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the books of accounts. Copies of approval for check invoices are properly documented.
Third.
Moved by Ms. Riley, seconded by Mr. Rutledge. Any discussion? Show of hands, all in favor? Eight-zero-zero.
I don't have any line items.
No line items, okay. Number 15, correspondence?
Oh, I do, I do actually have one.
Oh, yes, we do.
You would have gotten an invitation for the Enfield Adult and Continuing Education. You are cordially invited to the Enfield Adult Education graduation Thursday, June 7, 2018, at 7:00 PM at the Enfield Municipal Annex, lower-level library. So you should all have your invitations.
Is there RSP, or no?
Nope.
No, just be there. Thank you. Executive session.
There is not a need this evening.